Next item is a presentation by FAU on the Smart Cities Project. And Chris, you're going to direct this discussion. It's very exciting.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners. Chris Ruge, Director of Economic Development for the city of West Palm Beach. So, just a little bit of background before we get into it. So, this is a project that started last year. And it's basically a project to help us collect more data about how people are using our city. And I'll get a little bit into sort of how we got here in the first place. Then I'm going to invite Dr. Halstrom from Florida Atlantic University to come up, tell you what this WPA Mobility Intelligence Project actually is, and what we plan to do with it. And lastly, knowing that we do have a potential foundation funding partner, the Knight Foundation, which has historically been very supportive of the city. They're willing to chip in as well. And then there will be an ask about how you all would like us to move forward from this point forward with this overall project. So, the origins of this project and program that we're bringing before you today was the city has been doing, like I said, a lot with the Knight Foundation. And MK, Mary Catherine Morales, from FAU, who's in charge of foundations, you know, was very aware about that and came up and decided to ask, what else can the university and the city be doing together that would benefit South Florida and the state of Florida overall moving forward? And we came up with a series of ideas that we then wanted to sit down with the mayor about. Now, the idea of partnering with our local universities is not new. This actually, since the Economic Council took a series of opinion leaders to North Carolina and saw what they were doing up in the Research Triangle, it really brought home the importance of needing to take our local universities and really do as much partnerships with them as we can because they're untapped resources of creativity, innovation, and just local knowledge that can benefit the city greatly. So, when we sat down with then-Mayor Moyo about this idea, we decided, well, rather than just sitting here and trying to develop an idea in a vacuum, let's go ahead and have an ideation event, which is a fancy brainstorming initiative, that we sat down with a team from FAU and with all of the city staff and spent about a day going through challenges, ideas, projects, anything under the sun that this city was working on that we could then benefit from the university doing more of a deeper study into. And out of that ideation came a series of themes. And those themes were mobility, economic development, and geographic inclusion. And when we sat back down with the mayor, we came up with this idea of mobility sensing in our downtown and how people move around our cities, and how we can then affect human behavior as a result. So, that was the idea that came out of it. And then, we sat down with the Knight Foundation and said, does this idea have merit? And Lilly Weinberg from the Knight Foundation felt comfortable saying, yes, it does. And we think that the Knight Foundation could very much be a funding partner for a project like this, understanding that the city is supportive and is also going to contribute to the project as well. So, what came out of it was this idea of covering the city with sensors and having a really high-level expertise, PhD student, and a team of engineers from Florida Atlantic University that would partner with the city and commit to a three-year project that we could then really understand how people are using in their city. So, without getting too much more into the weeds, because really, Dr. Halstrom knows all the technical movements of how this project is going to work, I'll let him describe exactly what this program means.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor James, Commissioners, thanks very much. Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to address this group this morning. I also very much appreciate the time that you've all taken over the last several weeks to spend time talking with us, offering feedback about this project, and really helping us, I think, to improve the presentation today. So, thanks very much. The project that we've spoken about individually and the project that we'll summarize today is a technology development program. And so, this is a smart city technology development initiative. But it's a technology development initiative that is very much human-centered. It's a technology development initiative that's focused on putting residents and business owners at the center of the technology plan. So, we're going to be talking about a mobility sensing and mobility analytics program, a tool to help understand how do people move from point A to point B within the city of West Palm Beach? And as they move from point A to point B, where do they tend to spend most of their time? Where are the dwell patterns? What pathways do they prefer? Now, when we talk about mobility, we take a very broad view of mobility. We're not interested only in vehicle traffic. We're interested in vehicle traffic. We're interested in foot traffic. We're interested in bicycle traffic. If you wake up one morning and you have 100 scooters laying around West Palm Beach, we'd be interested in where those scooters are moving. So, this is mobility very broadly defined. In the end, the takeaway is that this is going to be a tool that the city will be able to use to understand not only how people move from point A to point B, but to be able to forecast where residents and where visitors might like to visit within the city, to be able to forecast specific business demand, to forecast business opportunity, and also to understand the impact of city initiatives that are focused on mobility. And so, that's what we'll talk about today. Now, how are we going to do this? If we look at smartphone ownership in the United States, the numbers are staggering. They're quite a bit higher than I imagine they were. It turns out that nationwide, about 80% of the population owns a network-connected smartphone. I suspect that those numbers are even higher in the city of West Palm Beach. I'm speculating. I don't know that for sure, but it's, I think, a reasonable guess. What I do know is that for those of us who own smartphones or who wear Apple Watches or Fitbits or have other types of wireless personal devices, we tend to carry those on our person. We tend to carry those in our pocket. We tend to carry those in our bags or we carry those in the glove box of our car. Now, it turns out that if you carry a smartphone or you wear an Apple Watch or you wear one of these personal devices, these devices, whether you're using that device or not, is constantly chattering. So, there's this kind of silent chatter that your phone is always doing, looking for opportunities to connect to a network. The hallmark of that chatter is a hello beacon. You can think about it just like that. So, it's a beacon that says, hello, here is a device that's available that would like to connect to a network. And importantly, within that hello message, there is a unique code, globally unique, assigned by the manufacturer and etched in silicon at the point of production. So, this identifier, which has nothing to do with the individual, has only to do with the device, is constantly being broadcast as you walk around with that device. Now, if we listen for those beacon messages and we listen for that code, we can look at measurements of signal strength. So, how loud was that hello beacon? I can use that as a mechanism to effectively pinpoint within a radius where that device is transmitting. And because that identifier is globally unique and persistent over time, we can use that as breadcrumbs. So, you can imagine all these little breadcrumbs being dropped out along the city as your phone is sending these beacon messages. And then, there are tools that we can develop to put those breadcrumbs back together, to assemble individual mobility pathways, and to look at how those mobility pathways change over time as a result of mobility initiatives within the city. The technology deployment plan calls for an array of passive receivers. Importantly, these do not look at network data. They look only at that portion of the message that yields that unique identifier that identifies that device. When these are deployed at scale, by collecting multiple signal measurements and collecting multiple hello messages, these breadcrumbs become higher and higher fidelity. So, you're able to track with very high precision how these devices move throughout the city. Now, each of these receiving stations will collect those breadcrumbs. It will tag those breadcrumbs with timestamps. And those will be transmitted up to an application in the cloud, which is just a, if you're not familiar with cloud computing, this is just fancy talk for a computer that lives somewhere where you don't care about it. So, there's a server process that runs up in the cloud. It collects those breadcrumbs. It assembles them into pathways. And then, it leverages the city's existing geo-referenced data sets to enhance that data, to fuse those mobility pathways with information about the geography of the city. Where are the businesses located? Where are mobility improvements being made? Where are new pathways being created? Where is improved canopy being installed? By fusing those mobility pathways with this overall data, this provides a very, very powerful, what we're calling a streetscape analytics tool, that will be exposed through a web front end that will be available for elected officials, for city managers, for residents, for business owners to make use of that data. It also opens opportunities for the system to offer targeted, highly individualized, hyper-local recommendations to residents and visitors based on where others have participated and dwelled within the city, based on their historical pathways through the city. You can offer recommendations on other places to visit within the city that would provide high value to the resident or to the visitor. Now, to focus on the web front end. This web front end, when you think about, okay, so there are going to be sensors. You're going to have things deployed. How does the city use this? So, there'll be a web front end that will be available to the city. And it will provide two fundamental types of visualizations. The images on the left-hand side of this slide are intended to give you a representative view of what those visualizations will look like. The first set of visualizations is focused on the raw mobility data. So, you'll have a mechanism to say, I'm interested in mobility patterns between this date and time and this date and time. And you'll effectively see a replay of those breadcrumbs moving about the scene to understand where there was a high volume of traffic. And then, you'll have the ability to disaggregate that traffic by mobility type. Show me all of the vehicle traffic. Show me the bicycle traffic. Show me the foot traffic. And you'll be able to see those pathways. The second type of visualization is represented by that middle box. And that middle box is intended to represent the power of this streetscape analytics idea. So, one of the things that you can do by taking the GIS layers the city already has and overlaying those mobility patterns on top is you're able to take the same kind of date and time range idea and say, show me the visits to specific businesses during this time window. Or to say, I'm interested in seeing the visits to businesses by type rather than to specific businesses during that timeframe. There are many, many other possibilities depending on how we overlay the city's existing data with that mobility content. One exciting opportunity that we'll explore is to look at tax revenue data, geo-referenced, and to overlay that tax revenue data with mobility patterns to potentially understand the complex relationships between mobility changes invested in by the city, the actual mobility changes that result, and the impact that those changes have on business activity and tax revenue. So, that's the idea. The final picture is intended to represent the recommendation system. So, once you have citywide data on how people move through the city, the types of businesses that they tend to visit, the types of businesses that individual pathways tend to frequent, that provides a mechanism to offer directed recommendations to individuals using kiosks or potentially via smartphone on other places they may like to visit. So, if you're trying to fit that in a mental model, what does that tool look like? To me, it feels like a hyper-local, West Palm Beach-specific version of something like Yelp or TripAdvisor. And indeed, companies like Yelp and TripAdvisor are very likely to be interested in the data being collected through this system, which could potentially create a new revenue stream for the city, something I'll talk about in just a second. This is a technology development initiative. Our team is composed of technology developers. That's what we do. But we're interested in a technology program that generates value for the city, that generates value for the residents, that generates value for the business owners that call West Palm Beach home. So, in the end, when we think about what comes out of this, there are three main takeaways that I'd like to leave you with. So, the first is that you'll have a powerful visualization tool to understand exactly how mobility works within the city. It's not a guess. It's a picture of what happened. It's a replay of the event. So, when the city asks itself, did we see a change in pedestrian behavior as a result of curbless sidewalks? Did we see improved transit when we installed new canopy? This system will provide quantitative answers to those questions, not models, measurements of what actually happened. So, that's part one. Part two is this recommendation system. We're very intrigued by this idea of using a mobility system and the city's existing GIS assets to understand how residents, how visitors, how business owners are connected to this place. And when we understand how they're connected to this place, we can leverage that understanding to offer new connections, to create connections that extend not just to residents who are close to the city center, but further and further out. Finally, this is going to be a powerful streetscape analytics tool. So, this is a tool that's going to allow you to understand what does pedestrian volume look like? So, this is not just numbers. This is what are the types of businesses that pedestrians frequent? When you have an understanding of pedestrian volume, pedestrian patterns, and pedestrian trends, this provides a tool for forecasting business opportunity. You can imagine that a developer or a leasing agent would be very interested in understanding the types of pedestrian flows that move at a particular area. This kind of information is especially important now when the city is advocating reduced vehicle traffic in favor of pedestrian and bicycle traffic. This tool will help to fill this new need. One thing that I failed to mention, and I'm going to back up for just a second, is that in this slide, I've showed a picture of District 3. The intent is for this system to be installed in every district, but we have to start somewhere. The plan is to start with District 3. And that's motivated primarily by the volume of heterogeneous mobility traffic in District 3. But again, the intent is to leverage what we learn in District 3. It will almost certainly need tweaks, and then to extend that to the other districts. So, with that, Chris, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
So, now, since you've seen the outline of the budget, or I'm sorry, of the project, the ask is essentially this. This project would be a three-year commitment starting this fall, anticipating that we would kick this off August 15, 2019, because that coincides with the academic year at Florida Atlantic University and identifying, I believe, a PhD student. And the commitment would be, the overall project budget is $200,000 a year for three years. So, it's a total of $600,000. And the Knight Foundation, as I mentioned before, has indicated that they are a potential funding partner for this project and has indicated that they could fund up to 50% of the cost of the project, which would mean the city's commitment would be around $300,000 for three years, so $100,000 a year. That funding availability could be built into the economic development budget, the budget that is part of the mayor's office and one that I oversee, as well as potentially using some of the CRA funding available as well to match and make up that $100,000 per year for the overall project. But what we were, the question is for today, do you like this project? Would you like to see it go forward? And if you are all comfortable with it, then we would bring back a funding resolution of some kind at a future meeting to meet the August 15, 2019 deadline. So, with that, we're happy to answer any questions on the details of the project. Thank you very much for your time.
Commissioners, any questions? Yes, I'm President.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. That was very educational and informative. And I wish all of my college classes were that easy to understand. So, thank you for bringing it to our level. I want to commend the city and the staff for partnering with our universities here. I know we do a lot with Palm Beach Atlantic, but to partner with FAU, I'm very appreciative of us taking advantage of our education capital here in the city and in our neighborhoods nearby. I appreciate that you mentioned that this could be replicated in other parts of the city. How easily will that be done? And kind of to that same question, is this already being done in other cities? And are we following somewhat of a model already? Or is this truly, we're, you know, leading the path?
So, first, let me speak to how difficult would it be to replicate this in other districts? I don't foresee any challenges in taking what we learn in District 3 and extending that to other districts. The technology deployed in District 3 will be identical to the technology deployed in any other district. And I should also point out that there's a hardware component, which is the installation of the actual receivers along the district. And then, there's the software component, which is the stuff that lives in the cloud and the analytics in the front end. None of that would need to be repeated for the other districts. So, that represents a one-time investment that benefits all. It's only those additional receiving stations that would need to be installed. So, I don't see that as a significant challenge. And I don't want to get, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but I think it's very likely that as we deploy these receiving stations along Clematis, we're going to identify areas where we don't need such high fidelity. And we're likely to move those stations potentially along the pathways out of Clematis and perhaps even in other districts. So, I think there's going to be a lot of flexibility to move these stations around. Now, in terms of the novelty of this idea and are we following a blueprint? To some extent, yes, we're following a blueprint. The idea of Bluetooth and Wi-Fi, it's called MAC recording, is a concept that's been around for some time. But it's not been used to study mobility. And it's not been used to take mobility data and to overlay that with GIS content to infer more meaningful streetscape data. So, the way that this kind of technology is typically used is very, very similar to the way that the motion loft cameras are being used in West Palm Beach today. So, the motion loft camera collects information about how many people are within some field of view. And that's what this Bluetooth and Wi-Fi beaconing technology's been used for previously, is to effectively create bar graphs that say, show me how many people were at this point at this time, rather than using that content to understand the mobility pathways through the city.
Thank you.
One thing I want you to address, I get it. But I think for those who may be viewing, I don't think we can emphasize it enough. Can you give us some assurance that this is not breaching anyone's personal privacy? The data we're collecting is not individual-specific? Can you elaborate on the privacy aspect of this, please?
Mayor James, I very much appreciate the question. This is something personally that I care very deeply about. And if we were in another setting, my friends would hear me go off about this. We care very much about individual privacy. And the information that we're collecting, this so-called MAC address, which is this unique code, is in absolutely no way associated with the individual owner of the device. So, there's no way for us to take that MAC code and to reverse that to identify the individual unless we were doing deep, so-called deep packet inspection, looking inside the packets to understand, were they connecting to YouTube? Were they connecting to Amazon, whatever it was? So, as an extra safeguard, even though this information cannot be used to identify the individual, as an extra safeguard, we're using something called, it's called a one-way hash function. So, you imagine that you give me a numeric code that uniquely identifies your device. I take that numeric code and I translate it in a one-way fashion into another numeric code, which can never be reversed to identify the original number. So, that provides an additional layer of protection, not only protecting the individual, but protecting the device of the individual. So, if we wanted to, I think, I think an important question to ask is, can this information be used for policing? This is an important question. And using this model, it cannot. So, this one-way hash function prevents the use of that data in the database from identifying an individual unless the phone was confiscated. If there was a subpoena both for the database and the phone, that's a different story.
Chris?
I do want to add that this actually came up with the Knight Foundation as well. And they're concerned about making sure that privacy was maintained and was probably going to be contingent on their funding to make sure that that is in fact in place.
Excellent. I'm very excited about the prospects of this. I mean, in terms of what we can learn and then how it could influence our strategies as a city, significant potential. Commissioner Robs.
Who will be the owner of the intellectual property at the end of the day?
So, the owner of the data would be owned by the city. I don't know that we've discussed ownership of the intellectual property. I, so I guess one natural question is, do we foresee licensable intellectual property coming out of this project? I think that the most likely source for protectable IP is not going to come from the hardware, but from the business analytics that stem from the project. I think this is something that we have to discuss seriously. I'll tell you my intuition. My intuition is that we both benefit from the partnership. It would be impossible for the university to develop analytics about West Palm Beach or for West Palm Beach without the participation of West Palm Beach. Likewise, I think it's challenging for West Palm Beach to develop those business analytics without the computing expertise at FAU. So, my instinct is that this would be shared intellectual property that would be licensed on behalf of both parties. That's something that we would have to codify as part of the agreement, but that's my instinct.
That's a very good question. And the lawyers will hopefully put something together.
I should also say, I can't make a decision on this. So, I'm speaking outside my pay grade.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
The data then would be maintained likely by FAU, I suppose, because it's going to be kept on FAU's computing system?
So, I had a chance to talk with Nathan Kerr recently about how this might be done. We're very happy to implement this in such a way that the data is stored, so-called...
Nathan's our IT guy, right?
Yes, yes. To store it on-prem within the city. I don't think that that's a good model for West Palm Beach today. It might be a model that makes sense two or three years down the road, but probably not today. So, during the implementation period, we would likely host all of this data within Amazon. So, we would host it outside the university. We'd host it in Amazon with all of the public-facing services provided to West Palm through a public cloud infrastructure, protected, but through the public cloud infrastructure. This is a model we've used for other projects. And it works very well when there is an intent to transition the database and software to another party outside of the university.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Your eyes say you do.
Yeah, I'm thinking here. There's a whole bunch of issues that comes up. So, I guess that this raw data that goes in there will be maintained, you know, there's no timeframe necessarily that it'll be, because you really need to maintain the data in order to see trends over a period of time.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm also just looking at, you know, just being a lawyer and a former law enforcement officer, you know, I know we're going to get requests for this data from defense attorneys, from law enforcement. Would law enforcement have, you know, direct access to this data? Or they would...
I would see law enforcement's access to the data as identical to anyone else. This would be a fully open access system. All data collected through the system would be available to every resident. It'd be available to any city official. It would be available to everyone. It'd be entirely public.
So, as a follow-up?
Yes.
So, if they have that phone from a suspect in, let's say, some sort of a crime that occurs on Clematis Street, you would potentially, law enforcement would potentially be able to track the movements of that person if they know the individual data from that device?
They, there would actually have to be three pieces of information to allow that to happen. There'd have to be the database. They would have to be in possession of the device itself. And they would also have to contain the parameters of the one-way hash function used to protect that MAC address. So, it's a three-part key in order to identify an individual.
So, you can get data, but you can't necessarily identify without utilizing the subpoena power, then?
That's right. Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted to make a comment that I think that the value of this program is, you mentioned earlier, that it will show us the impact of our mobility plans. And I think we have invested a lot in the mobility plans. And I personally love to see that we're able to provide transparency to our residents. And I personally love to see that we're able to provide transparency to our residents on what is the value of all these programs we've been putting in place. So I look forward to that information.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, you know, it'll also help with future development, I think, of our city when we start looking at, you know, when people start saying, okay, well, where are the trips coming from? If maybe the trips are, you know, maybe not as high with a vehicle, because that's where most of our data is right now, that we would be able to point to other trends, which would definitely help with encouraging development throughout our city.